Bonsoir à tous. Je m'appelle Alex Neve et je suis l'un des quatre commissaires de la commission de l'Autosécurité sur le convoi. Deux de mes autres collègues sont ici ce soir et ils vont se présenter quand ils viendront. Et je voulais vous dire que notre quatrième collègue, Debbie Awusu-Achia, n'est pas capable d'être ici aujourd'hui mais est très engagé et sera certainement impliqué dans les procédures futures à venir. Avant de partager de précautions personnelles, il me plaisait de présenter Sheldon Kishkins-Ross McGregor. Sheldon est un Algonquin Anishnabi de Kitigun Zibi. Il travaille avec le père Piter Decanti comme apprenti dans la cérémonie de feu sacré, ainsi que avec les anciens Algonquins pour transmettre la connaissance par les processus traditionnels. C'est notre grand honneur ce soir et nous sommes certainement très reconnaissants de Sheldon de nous rejoindre pour fournir une prière et des commentaires de bienvenue lorsqu'on ouvre. C'est la première session après tout aujourd'hui lorsqu'on ouvre la commission de l'Autosécurité sur le convoi. Donc s'il vous plaît, venez devant Sheldon.
Salut à tous. Bonjour à tous. On attend le micro. Attendez le microphone être parfait. Donc, l'une des choses que j'aimerais dire est que j'ai beaucoup participé aux négociations avec la police en ce qui concerne la appropriation de la culture des premières nations avec le convoi, surtout derrière les lignes jusqu'à ce que nous ayons des réunions. Maintenant, je ne veux pas devenir politique avec ça. Dans tout ça, j'ai été engagé beaucoup avec la police, le service de la police d'Autawa. La façon de les camionneurs ont appris les cultures de les autochtones. Ils ont appris les sans permission ou sans la connexion avec cette façon de culture dans le pays que je peux pas transcrire parfait anglais français. Donc, je... Donc, l'une des choses, revenant à ça, et c'est ce que je reçois après avoir parlé avec votre comité, est que vous, vous, vous mettez un déclaration de vos limites si ça arrive encore et ce qui est acceptable et inacceptable pour vous. Et le plus gros erreur que j'ai vue travaillant derrière les lignes avec nous, avec la police d'Autawa, est que l'une des choses les plus importantes qui a causé beaucoup de conflits était la manque de communication et de limites. Avec travailler avec le service de la police, en tout fait sans puis les aider avec les affaires, mais je veux beaucoup de conflits, ça arrivait en cause de la communication. La plutôt les aggravations puis les affaires moi je veux. Puis qu'est-ce qu'on fait ? On t'apprécier les règles. Qu'est-ce qui est acceptable puis pas acceptable. J'ai pas, je suis pas un membre de votre communauté. Je ne suis pas un membre de votre communauté. Mais je souhaite vraiment que vous, vous, vous puissiez communiquer ça pour vous. Et je ne veux pas devenir trop politiquement impliqué dans tout ça, surtout en faisant une ouverture qui est diplomate. Faire une valseur dans la langue Algonquin. Je veux pas être trop impliqué dans la politique de ça. Donc, je vais commencer. Ça se fait dans ma langue maternelle, c'est ma première langue, c'est Algonquin. Donc, je vais commencer. Que j'aime, on y doit. Je suis déjà un indien où on doit gagner. Gagner comme une noire, je suis déjà oui, donc, ah, c'est que, ah, minou mamados, on a gagné long. Ah, on va, on se, c'est que, ah, on a quitté. Ah, je suis déjà, ah, ponga, on a gagné. Ah, on va, on se, c'est que, ah, machka, c'est young, ah, non, on doit man. Je suis déjà, ah, au gigant, boy, on a gagné. Je suis déjà, au giga, on a gagné. Qui connaît ma main, ah, ya, conche, esquod, ah, oui, mi, god, work. Ah, on va, on se, mié, mi guet. Donc, c'est la fin. Malheureusement, je parle plus que je fais de vraies prières, donc... Oui, de toute façon, je souhaite une bonne réunion et je vous souhaite un bon rencontre puis vous allez à l'entour.
Well, thank you so much, Sheldon, for ensuring that we begin this, this journey, this very important journey, on the right path and certainly in the right way. And it also gives me an important opportunity to acknowledge on behalf of my, my fellow commissioners, but, but on behalf of, of the commission, the people's commission as a whole, that we launched this process very much aware of, certainly grateful for, and, and humbled to be doing so. Hearing from community, learning from stories and, and all along that way deepening our awareness and doing so in various locations throughout unceded, unsurrendered Algonquin territory. And that's always important to acknowledge, but it carries tremendous significance and consequence and meaning, I think, in our particular situation. Given that what we are examining, of course, throughout these coming weeks is the nature and impact of an occupation of these lands by convoy organizers and participants, some of whom may absolutely, yes, themselves live in these lands, the majority of whom, of course, came from elsewhere, sometimes from far away. And that reality, that's, that's just a foundational aspect of the occupation that will constantly frame and inform, and I think with your opening in mind for us, guide us in how we approach the conversations and the learning that, that is ahead for us. And that in turn highlights why this commission, I think, is so very necessary and important. And it points to the values that will underscore our approach really at every turn over the days and weeks to come. And that is, put very plain and very simply, this is all about human rights. And over the course of the commission's hearings and community meetings and, and through the written submissions that we will be receiving, we will be hearing and we will be asking questions about human rights. Human rights obligations and responsibilities, absolutely. And certainly about human rights violations and human rights harm. And what does that mean? Well, of course, we will hear much about the crucial and frankly very often fragile rights of freedom of expression and freedom of peaceful assembly. And, and those rights are of course what come together to give rise to the very essential right to protest that is so much in the air at this time. And those are all rights that are so important to society and critical to any healthy democracy. And, and we are all deeply committed and the commission itself very deeply committed to those rights. We are also however going to be very focused on the range of essential rights across the entire spectrum of human rights of the community, of the thousands of individuals who live, who work, who may regularly simply pass through the area that was most directly affected by the occupation. Those rights were in play long before the occupation began. They were certainly at stake every minute, every hour, every day that the occupation was underway. And they continue to matter very, very much today, tomorrow, next year and beyond. Were those rights acknowledged, respected and protected at the time of the occupation? Are those human rights concerns being appropriately assessed and understood now in the aftermath through, for instance, the various reviews that are underway? That's very much what is on our mind. And our sense is that the human rights reality faced by the neighborhoods, faced by the individuals who lived firsthand, day and night, through those difficult weeks in February, has not received the attention it requires and certainly the attention it deserves. And the Ottawa People's Commission seeks to fill that gap in knowledge and understanding and ultimately to make a contribution to healing, to accountability and absolutely to transformative change. Maintenant, je passe la parole à mon collègue et très très cher ami, Moniamazig.
Merci Alex. Bonjour. Je m'appelle Moniamazig. Et je suis invitée sur cette terre non céder de la nation Algonquin depuis plus de trois décennies. J'en suis à la fois privilégiée et honorée. J'espère toujours me conduire d'une manière humble et reconnaissante. Today, I feel that I am terribly privileged to be part of this incredible panel of commissioners, my friend and fellow residents of Ottawa, Alex Neve, Leylani Farha, and Debbie Awusu-Achia, who is unfortunately not with us today. However, along the feeling of privilege comes the feeling of responsibility or perhaps accountability. Car on ne peut pas se sentir privilégiée sans donner en retour. C'est important pour moi de continuer et de contribuer à la communauté qui m'a accueillie sur cette terre avec générosité en écoutant les témoignages de mes concitoyens et concitoyennes. C'est important pour que les résidents d'Autawa se sentent à la fois écouter et représentés. Je m'apprête à accomplir cette tâche avec beaucoup d'attention, de justice et surtout de compassion. Je ne suis pas juge et je ne suis pas avocate. Je suis une autrice. Je suis une personne qui aime lire, qui aime écrire et surtout qui aime réfléchir. Et c'est dans ce sens que j'aimerais écouter les expériences et les histoires vécues par les résidents et les résidantes d'Autawa pour que je puisse comprendre ce qui est vraiment arrivé et ce qui est vraiment passé pendant le mois de janvier 2021 et février 2022 où le convoi de camion est arrivé à Ottawa et s'est installé dans plusieurs quartiers de notre ville. Votre parole est importante. Pour aller au fond de cet épisode, ne la censurez pas et ne le sous-estimez pas. Chaque mot a sa place dans cette salle, bien évidemment dans les limites du respect mutuel et du civisme. J'ai grandi en n'ayant pas cette capacité de partager mon histoire. J'ai grandi entouré par un sentiment d'impuissance et de peur. Impuissance en écoutant les adultes sceptiques décourager me dire que tu ne peux rien changer. Peur en ayant peur des adultes qui vont me punir. Plus tard, en ayant peur des policiers qui m'espionnent et veulent m'humilier à chaque occasion. Ces sentiments vivent encore en moi même ici au Canada. Et même en étant devenue une adulte et même après des années en forgeant mon caractère pour me sentir plus forte. Même si nos sociétés ont beaucoup évolué sur le plan technologique, malheureusement elles restent encore assez figées sur le plan humain. Nos sociétés sont encore frileuses à donner la parole à plus de gens et surtout à faire sentir aux gens que leur existence est importante. Quelle que soit leur appartenance, quelle que soit leur race et leur niveau d'éducation et leurs conditions socio-économiques. Nous avons beaucoup de chemin à faire. It is an effort, it is in an effort to continuously tame these feelings of hopefulness and fear that I will be happy to sit and listen and take note and reflect. I might ask questions to clarify some points, but I will be mainly listening to your testimonies and stories. Mes chers concitoyens et concitoyennes, surtout ne vous sentez pas impuissants et n'ayez pas peur. Vous êtes entourés de votre communauté et des gens qui ne veulent que vous aider à bientôt ensemble un avenir meilleur pour nos enfants et pour notre ville. Cette commission populaire que nous entamons aujourd'hui est un élément de la réponse de la communauté à cette perturbation engendrée par le convoi de camion l'hiver dernier et qui a affecté à la fois les résidents et aussi les entreprises locales. Notre objectif est de créer un lieu de guérison et de justice en écoutant les histoires de ceux et celles qui ont été le plus touchés et en examinant la réponse des gouvernements de la communauté en vue de faire des recommandations pour que cela ne se reproduise plus jamais. Aujourd'hui, c'est la première session de témoignage d'audience en personne. Sur une période de trois mois, nous allons tenir des sessions en ligne ainsi que nous prévoyons des rencontres privées avec certains membres. Nous tenons aussi, nous allons tenir aussi des consultations avec les communautés qui ont été directement touchées par le convoi, incluant les personnes âgées, d'origine asiatique, les femmes vivant dans les refuges, des membres de communautés autochtones, de la communauté noire, de la communauté musulmane, de la communauté LGBTQ. Donc, on va essayer d'avoir les commentaires et les histoires de plusieurs communautés assez représentatives de notre ville. J'aimerais remercier d'avance, j'aimerais vous remercier d'avance pour votre courage et pour votre présence. J'aimerais également remercier toutes les personnes qui ont travaillé avec beaucoup de passion et d'acharnement pour mettre en place cette commission. Et bien sûr, je tiens à remercier mes collègues et mes amis, les commissionnaires, pour partager leur sagesse et leur contribution. Thank you very much.
The shortest commissioner. Good afternoon, I'm Leylani Farha. Before I talk to you about how this afternoon is going to run, I just thought I'd make a few comments like my colleagues did. I'm very honored to be here in the capacity of commissioner. This is a unique forum, a people's commission. This sort of forum, in my opinion, is essential to creating fulsome democracy. The only way that democracy can function effectively is if everyone is enabled to participate in that democracy. The OPC provides places and spaces for all rights holders to speak about their experiences during the occupation of Ottawa by the convoy. This process will allow many an opportunity to release what's been inside so many of us for so many months now. It provides an opportunity to be seen and to be heard. And this forum will provide us, in fact, with all that we need to know how to ensure the better protection of the rights of people in Ottawa in the future. So I take very seriously my role in this regard. I'm here in the service of the Ottawa People's Commission and in the service of democracy. Now, the run of show. Today, we're going to be hearing from seven local residents who registered to appear today before the commission. Each will offer opening remarks and then we, as commissioners, will take the opportunity to ask a few questions before moving on to the next presenter. The commission has verified the identity of all of those who've registered to speak, but to protect their privacy, some presenters may choose not to give their full names. Our session today is public and there is media in the room, but media have been asked to respect and protect the identity of those appearing before us. We are trying to create an open, welcoming and safe space. Everyone is asked to wear a mask, though speakers have the option to remove them when they speak. We want to ensure a respectful exchange and will not permit offensive, hateful or violent language or acts. Anyone who uses such language or is disruptive will be asked to leave. We recognize there are people who may be traumatized by their experiences of the convoy or even just by listening to others' experiences. Anyone who is feeling distressed may wish to step away from the hearing to reduce their stress. We have a quiet space just down the hall and a counselor present to offer mental health support for anyone who needs it. Our session today is being interpreted into French and English, so we are all encouraged to speak clearly and slowly to assist the interpreters in doing their job. So with those as our ground rules, I'm honored to call upon our first speaker. Thank you.
Hello. First off, I would like to thank the members of the commission, the media present and most especially my fellow community members for allowing me to have a voice here today. A brief introduction. I'm a 72-year-old Caucasian retired professional who two years ago downsized to a new $3,000 a month rent apartment building. The only reason I say this is because I think we'd all agree I am very much a member of a privileged society. I worry what happened to the many people surrounding me in my community who do not belong to this society. I really didn't want to stand here and just read to you, but I also find it very important that a lot of the points not be lost. So please bear with me. My personal experience with the convoy was an inability to sleep for more than a week. There were tailgate parties in a private parking lot across from my apartment. There were also beer tents set up in another private parking lot behind my apartment. There was an unbelievable increase in the dog feces on Bank Street as I walked by dog. It was only later that I learned that this was in actual fact human feces. People could be seen, adults, urinating all over the place on private property. The intimidation for wearing a mask while outdoors was non-stop. There was an increase in costs related to having to order groceries online, having to order any merchandise needed online. This was mostly due, or actually due, to the ongoing threat of violence when you left your home and were walking the streets in the red zone. I was not concerned so much, though I cannot say the same about my sons, about my own safety, as I was concerned about what would happen around me. Because these people continuously egged on residents. And of course, the fear was always someone is going to respond, which is what leads to unexpected violence. Okay? Because of these things, I also could not exercise my dog properly, which when you live in an apartment is a very important thing. I saw fire starters deliberately planted in an apartment building a half a block from mine. I saw handcuffs being put on the door, the main door, of an apartment building very close by that I had lived in for six months while awaiting my present apartment's availability. I will be honest, these I saw on the news and not in person, but they were happening. It was music and yelling at all hours of the night. The use of the word, well, the F-word, attached to every single sentence most of these people uttered, quite literally replace the famous Canadian A. It was yelled repeatedly. I have used the words myself, as I would guess most people in this room have, but not in front of children and certainly not in front of children that I was using as protection standing in front of me. There was the open carrying of Nazi flags, F Trudeau flags, some flags I didn't even recognize, but were all, according to my son and his girlfriend, very bad. This had a huge impact on my daily life. But I have to say, what had the greatest impact was, and it was very hurtful, was the repeated mantra from the press and from politicians who supported this, that this was largely a peaceful demonstration. We had one senator who my personal belief should have been fired on the spot without pension, who actually was on national news drunk stating that he didn't want the convoy to leave Ottawa, that it was in fact just the entitled residents of Ottawa who wanted this. Shutting down our streets, terrorizing citizens in their own homes, leaving businesses with no choice but to close their doors, some of which never recovered their business, and making a mockery of our judicial system while demanding our prime minister and his government be handed over to them, is not a demonstration, let alone a peaceful one. I have relatives and friends across the country who had no idea how threatened this city was at the time. The impact on my city is permanent. There's no question in my mind. The impact on my country will be nothing less than catastrophic if these racist, violent leaders, taking advantage of those truly needing help, only to spread their message of hate, are not stopped now. One of the things that you might find a little strange that bothers me the most in all this, but it truly is something that bothers me the most, is there is a schizophrenic man who goes up and down my block once or twice a day, or I should say did. He also frequently slept in that parking lot. He also frequently slept in that parking lot across the street that I spoke of. I have not heard or seen him since the convoy. This gentleman did not suddenly decide to enter a shelter, so I really question: my block was his home, so where is he now? And why was he driven out of his own home? Whether we believe this is an issue or not, I truly do, because this was his home. My son's girlfriend, they live in the same apartment building as me, lost $575 in two days of employment because she could not go into work safely, she walks. Aside from that, she lost an incalculable amount by the number of clients who cancelled or refused to book because they did not want to come to centre town. I have lived in Ottawa my entire life. I listened to the protests going on every weekend since I moved to downtown Ottawa. And as I said, I grew up in the '60s, so I know what protests are, and I know what violent insurrections are. This is the first time in my entire life I have been ashamed of Canadians, not ashamed to be Canadian, but ashamed of any of my fellow Canadians. And again, I can't thank you enough for giving me an opportunity to speak before you all. Thank you.
No, thank you so much. It's always, of course, hardest to go first, so thank you so much. Your comments were very well received. I was hanging on your every word, so thank you. I'll open it to my colleagues if you have questions. I know I have one, but I'll go last or...
Yeah. Thank you so much. I would just like to echo Leilani's comments that somebody had to go first, and I think we're very fortunate that you were that person. Never easy, and I think the clarity and the courage and the comprehensiveness of what you've shared with us was a really helpful and powerful way to begin. One of the things that I would be curious to know about is whether you had any... You've referred to quite a variety of various serious concerns, whether they were things directly impacting you or your family or people directly in the community, such as your concern for the man whose home was in the nearby parking lot. Did you have an opportunity to try to raise any of those concerns with police, with political officials in any way? And if you didn't, was there a reason why you didn't feel inclined to do so?
Certainly not with police, because like many of my fellow residents, a great deal of the anger was directed at the police. Okay? Because they appeared to be doing nothing. They went so far as to give areas that these people could set up in, ways to enter and leave the city. As far as the media is concerned, I did one day have enough of this. It's just a peaceful demonstration largely. And I called CBC, and I have to admit, I did not expect a response. I got a machine, and within 10 minutes, a CBC reporter called back and said that he would be at my place within 10 minutes. He was on the hill at the moment. And when he came, I did speak to him and say what my concerns were. I wouldn't even approach City Hall, because again, one of the biggest, biggest things that were upsetting was that the federal government and the provincial government, having both stepped in the day before to say they were going to do something, and in actual fact, the federal government announcing that the RCMP and other police sources would be starting the next day to clear it out, we then had our mayor attempt backdoor negotiations with what many of us, sorry, many of us, considered to be terrorists. And that was like, I'm sorry, to me, that was just an unfair political move when nothing had been done for a month prior to that, two months, I guess. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. I have one question for you. You mentioned that you have seen many flags.
Yes.
Right? And you said that some of them are Nazi, like, so did you see them?
Yes, I did, but like I said, I didn't know what they were, but I can't...
F flags, yeah, F Trudeau flags, you said, right?
Yeah, but there was more than that. And I can actually tell you now what they were, because my kids explained them to me. And... Okay, as she describes, it's symbols of hate, seen with my own eyes, and I saw them too. Confederate flags, F Trudeau flags, Gadsden flags, G-A-D-S-D-E-N. I don't really know what they are, but apparently they're asking for violence. An Australian Eureka flag, and Patriot flags from Quebec. There were also people wearing ski masks, with only their eyes and mouth showing, which is a little intimidating.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Very appreciated. I had not heard the story, or any stories, about homeless people being displaced because of the convoy, so that was really useful for my set of information. My question pertains to a comment you made about watching the news and seeing political officials making comments that were supportive, or somewhat supportive, of the convoy.
Yes.
And how that made you feel. I'm wondering if you could just expand on that a little bit, because there was, I think you were implying there was something, a particular feeling related to them being elected political officials.
Yes.
So if you could just comment on that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. One of the main reasons I didn't was because I thought it would come across as bringing politics into my feelings, but I think regardless of what affiliation you have politically, to see elected members having coffee with these people, coming out and bringing them coffee, taking pictures with them, engaging with these people that were openly demanding the takedown of our government, was unbelievably frightening. And to have so many of these same politicians perpetuate that myth that this was largely a peaceful demonstration, that was extremely... That went beyond upsetting. To me, that's frightening, that we in Canada now have politicians who are willing for votes to betray Canada, their country. That I find very, very frightening.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Hello. I'm one of the people speaking today that's going to remain anonymous. I was a counterprotester, one of the first ones in the beginning of the occupation, and there have been reprisals for people that are counterprotesting, especially online. A lot of hate, so I'd like to remain anonymous, but I'll go by Matt, if that helps. And so I'm gonna, what I'm gonna be talking about today is kind of about my experience, what led me to counter protest, and also, I'm gonna have a video accompaniment as well. And I might go a little bit over, so I apologize, but I think it's very important to see what I saw that those few days. So I did go counter protesting up on Parliament Hill on February 2nd and 3rd, so kind of right in the thick of it. This is a picture of me that was taken right at the base of the hill in front of the trucks. On the first night, I went counter protesting, and the video that will be shown was from my second outing the next day during the day. So by February 2nd, residents of downtown Ottawa had already experienced several days of trucks and protesters entering our city with zero control or mediation by the city or Ottawa Police Service. In the days when people were coming in from out of town, we saw photos circulating of people waving swastika flags, cultural appropriation of indigenous practices, Trudeau hanging by a rope. We saw banners of ultra-right nationalist hate groups. We saw widespread harassment of mask wearers in our community, and several instances of public intoxication, urination, and defecation. And not to mention the toxic fumes from all the vehicles and garbage that was left behind. I should also mention, there was a broken window at Happy Go Coffee on Elgin Street, which happened to have a trans pride flag in that window at the time, which was, in my view, a hateful act. And so the police stood idly by and did nothing. And so the first night I went out to protest alone on the hill, which is when this photo was taken, a group of police officers came up to me and said, quote, "We know you're up here trying to speak your mind against all this, but if you stay here any longer, we can't guarantee your safety." I told them that I had the right to be there and that I would not be moving away. They casually stood at the corner, watching everything happen, and in some cases, took photos with the convoy protesters. This blew my mind. This made me feel alone and reinforced the general community sentiment of residents that OPS had completely lost control of the situation and could no longer properly enforce the law. It is my view that some of the things that the previous speaker spoke of, including the arson attempt of an apartment building, happened because of this sense of lawlessness in our community. I counter protested because I felt powerless and angry. I felt like people came to our city, tortured us with horns all day and all night, and felt like they owned the place because they were allowed to do anything they wanted to. It sickened me to hear stories of harassment from people in my community, and to see downtown Ottawa essentially become a free-for-all zone for drinking, partying, and fireworks. We have the right to feel safe in our community. So I went to my woodshop, I found some materials, and made a large sign that says, "We will not be held hostage in our own city." I went out to protest three times for about 10 hours total over three days. The phone footage that I'm gonna show you shows clips from just one of these outings, the second outing during the day. "We will not be held hostage in our own city." That's what it felt like. We felt like hostages until the convoy got its way. It was an ultimatum that went against the democratic process and subverted the rule of law, the very foundation to which this country is based on. The convoy people say that everyone protesting was respectful and courteous towards the community. They handpicked videos of children playing and people smiling to show how nice they were. This was not the reality on the ground. This was a group that consisted of many aggressive and belligerent people who had zero respect for the impact their presence had on the people of Ottawa. They simply didn't care about anything except getting their way, against the will of the vast majority of Canadians. And they were emboldened by the lack of response from law enforcement and all levels of Violence was always very close by. The sense of fear and lack of safety was always at hand. While counter protesting, I experienced a crowd of people surround me, intimidate me, block my path, cover my sign with their own flags, stare me down with anger, yell in my face with no mask, blow smoke in my face, truck horns blaring constantly right in front of me, among other things. And I'm a big guy, but they had big guys following me around while I was on the hill counter protesting. In the end, it was people like Zexy Lee, Catherine McKennie, Joel Harden, and others who took action, grassroots action, in our community, who did the most to inspire hope in this dark time. We had to pull together, and it wasn't the city of Ottawa, and it wasn't the Ottawa Police Service that did that. It was people in our community. The entire experience was a trauma that will not soon be healed for a lot of us. And so I'm gonna now play the video. It's about four minutes long, so I hope that the sound comes through okay and you kind of get a sense. Again, this is a very short clip of the 10 hours I spent on the hill over three days. Again, this is a very short clip of the 10 hours I spent on the hill over three days. All right. Sorry, I'm feeling like, yeah, that's at the point where they started crowding around me and I started getting pushed against the truck. So, yeah, that kind of shows a small sample of what I went through when I went on the hill, counter protesting there. Thank you for having me and thank you for letting me share my experience.
Thank you very much, Matt, for sharing that with us and for, I guess, reminding ourselves, reminding all of us as to what it was like on the ground. I had two questions. Maybe I'll just ask them back to back. They're not necessarily related. One was just a clarifying piece. You may have mentioned it, but I overlooked it in Wanyi Tibu, very much respectful of your anonymity. But could you just let us know, do you actually live or and/or work in the affected neighborhood?
Yes, at the time, I lived right at the heart of where the protests were happening, on Metcalf Street.
Okay. And then I wanted to pick up on your comments about the exchange you had with the police and their assertion that they can't guarantee your safety, which I suppose fair enough. You know, police can't guarantee anyone's safety, but I certainly understand the context in which it was being said to you wasn't just simply about communicating that reality. It was sharing a different kind of message. But I wanted to go from there to the experiences you described where you were starting to be accosted and threatened and surrounded. I know you said that happened at least once, maybe even more than once. Wondering if there was any, if you had a sense as to whether there was any police awareness of what was happening to you? If police were around when that was happening to you? Whether you did or thought of approaching police about any of those particular encounters? Anyway, just kind of explore that experience in that context of what the police were or were not doing.
Yeah, there were police around. They were very casually kind of onlooking, leaning against walls, talking to each other in groups, doing walkarounds, in no way exhibiting any sort of presence, really. They were kind of onlookers, it seemed like, at all times when I was there. So there were times for sure that I felt unsafe. There were times that, you know, and I knew that going up there it was going to get pretty rowdy. And I did have a, I had a strategy of non-engagement. I just didn't engage unless I asserted my right to be there and I calmly asked people to stop crowding around me and to stop harassing me at times. But, you know, that was, I didn't want to flare anything up. But I didn't feel like there were enough police up there, absolutely not. There were probably a dozen that I kind of saw across all of Wellington Street when I was up there throughout that whole area. So I, it didn't seem, it didn't seem like they had enough presence up there and it didn't seem like they were too concerned. And those, especially in that initial stage of what was going on.
Thank you.
So you have been, how many, you said some, like how many days? Or did you go there approximately?
Three days total and about three hours each day.
Yeah. Did you see children?
Yes, a lot of children.
And because in the media we hear or we heard somehow that the kids are having fun and the families are, like, what do you have to say about that?
Well, I mean, if you see kids without ear protection in front of dozens of trucks blaring their horns, you start to get worried. You start to get worried of who really cares about those kids? Who cares about their wellbeing and safety? And, you know, honestly, it, that was one of the things that hurt and shocked me the most when I was up there was just like people partying with a drink in their hand or, you know, they're waving a flag with a stroller and the kid is just there without any ear protection. And, or, and generally not knowing what's going on. It's a very intense situation. So just in my one experience, I know it's anecdotal, but I can tell you that I worried. You know, I couldn't say anything, obviously. But, yeah, it was something that was very concerning. And I wish I could have done something about it. But, yeah, there were a lot of kids there. Some were happy and playing and some were, seemed pretty distraught, rightfully so. So that was my take on the matter.
Just one also question. You said you went to protest because you felt powerless and angry. Did you feel also scared?
I did, absolutely. I felt scared. I felt scared for people in my community. But I feel like at that time, in the initial, that initial weekend of the convoy, people needed some sort of hope and some sort of symbol of resistance or some sort of, somebody doing something, anything. Nobody did anything. So, I don't know, I made a sign. And I went up there and people, a few people took pictures. People made a few pieces of art of me up there and circulated on Reddit and stuff. And some people said that it made a huge difference in how they felt because they felt scared and alone and lonely and trapped, hostage. And some people said, told me just on my screen name on Reddit, just like how much, you know, it made them feel good that somebody was on their side. So, I mean, if there's, so that, that, I'm glad that they told me that because it makes me doing that worth it because I could make people feel safer when the government and when the police and when politicians couldn't. So, you know, I can be proud of that. But at the same time, yeah, it was really scary and it was intimidating. So I haven't looked at that video since it happened. So it was pretty, yeah, pretty visceral experience watching that back.
Just a very short follow-up question. And thank you for sharing the video, deeply disturbing, obviously, but probably a necessary reminder. My follow-up question is to what Monia asked, which is, so you protested for three days. Within that time, and I don't know why you didn't continue, but my question is, did you ever feel like, oh, maybe I shouldn't go out? Maybe I shouldn't protest?
Absolutely. It was dangerous and it was, again, that sense of lawlessness, that the sense of kind of, they own that place, you know? They didn't feel, they felt like the police were on their side. Like they were taking pictures with police officers and the police were into that. So I was definitely, definitely, you know, second guessing myself. But, yeah, I don't know. I just felt like I needed to do it and maybe it would help to start getting a more of a grassroots conversation going on how we're going to, you know, how we're going to counter these people that have literally taken over our entire downtown core of our city. And so, you know, I won't take credit for all the stuff. There's so many other people that counter protested. I was inspired by the three women, older women, who stood in front of that truck on their street. And if, and they just sat there and they didn't let them through. And I thought that was an extremely brave thing to do on behalf of their community. And I was inspired by them to go do it. And so, yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of the reason I put that kind of fear aside. And I said, you know what? This is something that people need to see. And that also the truckers that were death staring me in the eyes while I pointed my sign in their faces, they needed to see that not everybody was on their side. Yes, they're partying, they're lighting off fireworks. They think that they own our city. But not everybody believes what they believe and that not everybody thinks they're right. And I could tell I angered a lot of people in those trucks. So I guess that's one win, too. I got to, I got to see them get a little flustered. So, yeah, that was my experience, so.
Thanks a lot, Matt.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for having me.
Hi, thanks so much for seeing me today. So thank you again for this commission and for the work that you're doing. The line share of what I'll be discussing this afternoon has already been provided to the city's auditor general and to the federal, oh, yes. I'd feel more comfortable leaving it on if that's all right.
Okay, all right.
It's hard to hear through the masks, so speak as slowly and clearly as you can, please.
Wonderful, I'll do my best. Thank you. So I'd just like to recognize that we are on the unsated territory of the Algonquin Nationale. And I'm happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have following my statement. All right, so following what took place a few months ago, the city, including residents, need to participate in a public hot wash of the event. We need to know what went wrong, where the system failed, who made what calls, and there needs to be accountability. The city is and was prepared to handle events of this nature. Tabletop exercises are done, thousands are spent on training and preparation every year. This was preventable, or at least the damage could have been mitigated. It didn't have to be this way. We're constantly told it was an unprecedented event to excuse the weak response. That doesn't cut it. Ottawa is a G7 city that has a proven track record of hosting large, complicated events. This is the 2017 Public Information and Media Relations Emergency Management Plan from the city of Ottawa. I have this because I was an employee at the time of their communications group. We prepared this in 2017, an update from the 2011 plan in preparation for the 150 celebrations. So the city of Ottawa has a large and varied history of preparing and holding very successful large events. There are teams at the city dedicated to preparing for emergencies and large events, and yet when the residents needed help the most, their raison d'être, they were unable to support residents. According to the city's December 2021 Emergency Management Plan, also available on Ottawa.ca, a state of emergency is considered when the city has entered into an activated operations level situation and the Emergency Operations Centre Control Group recommends to the head that a state of emergency be declared. From the same report is a diagram of the response and management objectives of the city. So you'll see at the center, it's to maintain public confidence. A few of the sub-objectives are to protect public health, reduce economic and social losses, and protect infrastructure and property. The reality of what happened is completely contrary to the objectives listed in their emergency plan. All of this context leads to questions. What information was the control group receiving? When was the status of emergency finally proposed by the control group members? And why was the decision made only on February 6th? The delay in declaring a status of emergency prevented provincial and other resources from being attributed to the city.
Can you slow down just a little bit? I like to take lots of notes and I'm not able to keep.
I'm a fast talker, I apologize.
Thank you so much.
So from the city's emergency management plan, risk management is a shared responsibility at all levels. So all employees are required to demonstrate risk-aware thinking and accountability to mitigate or escalate risk when warranted. From experience, I know the large majority of city employees are dedicated and extremely capable. It is unthinkable to me that senior leadership was not aware of the ongoing harms to the community from the very beginning, after the first weekend, as I'm sure issues were being flagged up by staff to the control group and decision-makers regularly. Why did they not change course once it was clear their risk assessment and intelligence gathering function failed? Why did they keep relying on intelligence and advice that was proven to be wrong? What use is an emergency management plan if it's failed to be put into practice? And why does the city not have any urgency in getting its house in order? What is the city doing to prevent this from happening again? The city has a self-imposed requirement for an after-action report following an emergency, but that is not enough. The official response so far does not meet the severity of the situation. It's been seven months. There's been no support provided to residents. City leadership stood by while people were being actively harmed for days. Why? Yes, the city's auditor general, an impartial third party, is looking into the matter. But shouldn't city leadership be more concerned about the serious failure of their emergency management plan? How can residents trust that bylaw, police, Ottawa Public Health have their best interests at heart? How can we trust their judgment if they choose to revert their gaze and attention from the wellbeing of residents for three weeks? To ignore, to not acknowledge, to pretend it wasn't happening, and then to not provide any targeted services, community town halls, or any serious reflection, review, and apology in the months that follow? How can we trust that the city will be there when we need it? Climate change isn't going away. And the city now more than ever needs a strong social support system for residents, not just lip service and reports. Action is needed. We need leadership with a backbone. Leadership needs to grow a backbone or step aside. Based on my personal experience, I can't help but think that the things would have gone differently if Anthony Demonti, the former GM of Community and Protective Services, had still been with the city. It's crystal clear from the outside looking in that decisive leadership was missing to step in and course correct once it's obvious that things weren't going according to plan. Did the control group and the head of council defer to the police for the emergency response? Even after it was clear they had mismanaged the situation from the get-go? Why the deference? It's not just center town residents who see this. Canadians across the country witness the failures and harms in real time. And they watch city leadership stand by. History will not look kindly at those in charge. I was going to provide a statement that I had submitted previously based on my personal experience, but I don't want to take up too much of the commission's time. So I'll just close my notes, but I did also submit a personal experience of my situation as well. So it's been months and we should have had an after-action report already. Residents deserve answers and accountability. We don't need another committee or task force or investigation. These are Band-Aid solutions that have been used in this city for far too long by decision-makers to make it look like action is being taken, while in fact the status quo is being maintained. Any crisis communications or PR firm worth their salt would advise city leadership that the time for platitudes has passed. You can't rewrite what happened, gloss it over, or fix it with communications. You have lost the public's trust. You have a legitimacy crisis on your hands and the people of Ottawa cannot trust your judgment. Pretending it didn't happen doesn't help. We have seen behind the curtain. Actions speak louder than words and it's time for action. Show us why residents should trust you again. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing that. I guess maybe two related and unrelated questions. I appreciate that you say you've provided a written statement that shares some of your personal experiences. So I don't, I'm not wanting or expecting you to go into that, but I'm wondering if you might be able to just give us a very kind of brief overview of some of the kinds of personal things that were of concern for you. And then my other question is, so it was very interesting, you know, and very helpful to us to hear you put it into the, all of this into the context of the city's emergency management planning and obligations, et cetera. Makes me wonder, did you, did you, what kind of effort did you, if any, pursue to try? Makes me wonder, did you, did you, what kind of effort did you, if any, pursue to try to engage with the city? You clearly seem to have a lot of knowledge and experience around kind of city processes, et cetera, and just wondering if there's anything you could share around that.
Absolutely, hope, happy to provide that. So, in regards to your first question, regarding just a brief overview of my experience, I lived, my husband and I, we lived on the 21st floor of a high-rise condo at Gloucester and Lion. We moved this summer as a result of the convoy and our experience. After, after the convoy, we never really recovered our love of the neighborhood, or even the businesses that were there, or the safety. We have two dogs, so similar to previous speakers, it really impacted our ability to care for animals as well as care for our own mental health. I experienced a lot of large vehicles, I have videos of lawbreaking, I have videos of cars going down the wrong way on Lion Street. I had called and reported fireworks going off, or a fire, a bonfire being built beside a Hydro Ottawa building. I had called and reported that and was told that there, there was no concerns and that people had already been on site and that was not to be worried. I ended up leaving, my, my husband and I ended up leaving our apartment after the first weekend to stay with my parents for a week, however, that was untenable because we couldn't have four adults working full-time on one internet connection in one house, so we had to relocate back. My parents kept our dogs for, for the remainder two weeks. I also suffered severe health impacts. I started suffering migraines and panic attacks. My blood pressure was at 149 over 103, 152 over 100. I booked urgent medical appointments, my doctor prescribed me with Klonopin, I've had sleep and insomnia issues. So that's sort of just a brief overview of sort of what I've seen, and I've seen and can validate everything else that the other people have, have already stated so far regarding, you know, what you've seen on the ground. In terms of my experience with the city, so I, from 2017 until December 2021, I was the city communications employee. So I worked first for the Public Information and Media Relations Group, and then in March 2020, I went to Ottawa Public Health where I supported communications, and I worked very closely with Dr. Etches. In terms of my concerns and, and, you know, I have very close connections with people at the city and friends who are still city staff members. I know that city staff were aware, they were following my Instagram, they were watching my stories. I reached out to Dr. Etches and Chair Egli, asking them to step in and, you know, saying there's these obvious human rights issues, there's mental health, there's physical health, not just me experiencing it, I'm incredibly privileged. So for someone like me to experience, with my amount of privilege, to experience that amount of distress is very concerning for me. I've, I've worked the Westboro bus accident, the 2018 tornado response, the flood response, the COVID-19 vaccination campaign, Canada Day 2017, all within the capacity of a, of a duty officer with the city of Ottawa. So that's how I'm familiar with the communications plans.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you, you indicated that you had reached out to Dr. Etches, is that right? And I'm sorry, did Dr. Etches respond?
I did receive a response. It was said that the concerns were shared, and that was that. Basically indicating, reading between the lines that she had expressed and done what she could and that, that was that.
Right, thank you. Thank you so much. I also just wanted to say one other thing, which is, I really, and I'm sure on behalf of my colleagues, we appreciate you sharing that personal information. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your work.
Hello, Ottawa People's Commission, and thank you for having me share my lived experiences here today. My name is Christine, and I've lived in Ottawa my whole life. I've been a resident of Centertown for over 16 years. So, I've never experienced anything like the Freedom Convoy before. I went down to observe it about five times for about eight hours a day, and never in one place have I experienced so much love, unity, respect, strength. I witnessed all Canadians from all colors, cultures, and creeds, including Sikhs, Jamaicans, an Inuit grandmother, Mohawk and Tiahana Dega warriors, and Chinese dissidents, Romanians, Hungarians, and Poles, people who came here for freedom and for human rights, people who came to escape tyranny and communism. I witnessed French, English, left and right, rich and poor, all uniting under one flag, the Canadian flag, standing together, I felt, so that you and I and our future generations can live in an inclusive and just society, standing together in an act of compassionate civil disobedience, saying no more to this discrimination and segregation, no more to sweeping rights violations, and no more to the fear and hatred we've been being force-fed for two years. The only aggressive and threatening behavior I experienced was a militarized law enforcement acting after the emergency order was placed. I saw old ladies being trampled by horses on livestream, peaceful, patient patriots holding the line, being beaten with batons and not fighting back, journalists being shot with tear gas canisters, and armed police in balaklavas on every corner requiring me to show ID to walk in my own neighborhood, suspicious that I might be a protester. I experienced some hatred and harassment from a handful of counter protesters who called us names. They called us racist and homophobic, anti-science, and conspiracy theorists without ever knowing us. Even though every culture was a part of the movement to peaceful assembly to enact this change and remind us all of the power of the people, the counter protesters, I believe, called us these terrible names because the TV told them to. And instead of a dialogue with us or listening, they just wrongly assumed our intentions and labeled us as bad people. For two years, I lived as an outcast in my community, locked in my home, suffering, and I feel that the truckers came to set me free. I received free hugs, hot dogs, and hot chocolate. I saw supporters, teachers, farmers, doctors, and nurses, hand in hand, cleaning up the streets, feeding the homeless, and giving out free haircuts. I witnessed one lane for emergency vehicles being kept open at all times, and I was given free earplugs. Never once did I feel unsafe due to the Freedom Convoy. In fact, I felt a sense of pride and hope in my country that I haven't felt for a long time. Also, I might add, in my opinion, crime in the downtown court had never been so low. I also saw protesters joining hand in hand with police, singing "Oh, Canada" and dancing. When Ottawa's former police chief Peter Solley was quoted on the CBC on February 2nd as stating there have been no deaths, no riots, and no injuries because of the protesters, and that the protesters remained largely peaceful. This notable lack of violent incidents and arrests for a demonstration of this magnitude speaks volumes. That's okay, he has my permission to film. The excuse used to enact the Emergencies Act was that police asked for it. But now, during the parliamentary inquiry with the police denying that they ever asked for it, it'll be very interesting to get to the truth of the matter here. Instead of condemning my fellow Canadians, I went out and I talked to them, and I asked them what hardships compelled so many of them from every background to gather on the bridges and roads in sub-zero temperatures, to give what little money they had so generously, and to be away from their families and away from the comfort of their warm homes, to stand together in peace and love for their fellow forgotten Canadians such as me. What would compel someone to stand in defiance for freedom of expression, personal choice, freedom of assembly, and freedom of association and movement? I thought that was what Canada was founded upon. No, the truckers didn't keep me in my home, or stop me from working or seeing my family, or keep me living in fear during the last two years. In my opinion, it was the unjust mandates, unconstitutional restrictions, and discrimination driven by power-hungry hypocritical elites and a sensationalist divisive media that did this to me. I appreciate that your website says that this is an independent and non-bias and non-partisan inquiry into the Freedom Convoy, a safe space for all to tell their experiences. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but I wondered why then, it seems as though your, people are screening out people who share my sentiments and, and telling people like me that it's booked and it's full, and only taking people who have negative experiences of the convoy to speak here. I was also wondering why on your website, on the online forum, you only have boxes to check about racism, hatred, discrimination, negative experiences. You didn't have any boxes to check about positive experiences on your website, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but I, I also have those questions for the committee.
Thank you very much, and I'll, I, I have a question for you, but I'll start by answering your questions. It is not our intention, over the span of the next few months, to screen people out. What we are absolutely endeavoring to do over the course of the commission is to gather stories and experiences of what it was for people who, who lived through the convoy. So we're not looking for people who from afar may have opinions about it, but you've shared with us that you're a Centertown resident, so people who lived through it and, and have experiences. And, and we're aware, obviously, we're aware that there are, there are people, including people in Centertown, who will have a different view, will have different perspectives than, than for instance, some of what we've heard in the opening presentations. We welcome the fact that, that you're here today to share that, and there will be other, we're not just having hearings today and tomorrow, there's going to be other hearings and we may well even consider whether there's an opportunity where we would want to have a session that focused only, or, or almost only, on people who want to share sort of a more positive experience as well. So that's, that's not our intention. The, the form you're, you're referring to is simply trying to start to get a sense of what kinds of information people want to bring forward. And, and we are particularly, and I think what that screening form focuses on, because we are taking a, a human rights approach, very much focusing on the experiences that some community members have, we respect the fact that that wasn't your experience, but you've already heard from three others who had a different experience, and you're obviously well aware there are many others like that, who have experiences that do involve harm that would constitute human rights abuse and human rights violations, and we want to get a sense of that so that we can start to make sure that we're getting a, a full view of that. So, you know, that will continue to evolve over the course of the fall. I guess maybe a, a little bit in that vein then, I'd be, you know, you've made it very clear to us that your own experience was not negative, and in fact, you've been very glowing and positive in how you've described it, and, you know, we respect that, that view and that experience. I'm, I'm guess I'm wondering what, how you, I don't know if reconcile, I'll use the word reconcile, but how, how does that sit alongside the fact that clearly you're aware, whether it was from media coverage at the time, other information you've heard, the, the three individuals who preceded you today, that there are numerous other people who had a very different experience and, and in fact, an experience that amounted to feeling very deeply harmed, whether it be physically harmed, mentally harmed, subject to taunts, harassment, and racism. How, how do those two kind of sit alongside for you?
Well, I heard the first speaker and, you know, everybody, I'm glad that everybody came to share their lived experiences. I'm disappointed that it appears that the commission is screening out people that had positive experiences with the truckers, since I had to be dishonest to be invited to speak here today, and my friends were told last week that it was all booked up. So, but how I reconcile that is that I, I hope that this is an open place where all viewpoints are welcomed, and I, I do support people if they have evidence of, you know, violence or rights violations to bring it forward. I would love for the city to get to the truth of the matter here. Myself, I lived in fear for two years, I was discriminated against for two years, and I feel that the truckers freed me from all that, so that's my perspective, and I'm glad I was able to come here and say it today, although it wasn't in the way that I had hoped.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I understand correctly, you live in downtown Ottawa, right?
Yeah, just two, two blocks up from here.
Right. And you said that you were discriminated for two years. Can you tell us how?
Oh, yeah. You know, I, I can, I'm not able to wear a mask for long periods of time because I have asthma, so I can't breathe, and I've been chased out of stores, I've been yelled at, spit at. I chose not to participate in a medical experiment vaccination, so, you know, I was suspended from my job. I was an outcast in my community, I wasn't welcome. My family lived in fear, my children were not able to go to school, they weren't able to do sports, so that's how I felt harassed and discriminated against over the last two years.
And you said that the truckers came and liberated you, right? Did they knock on your door? Did you know them personally? How did you?
Oh, I knew that they were there, standing up in an act of civil disobedience for my rights and for the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, and that's what I felt out of it. And I also know that, you know, having been an activist in my youth, if the government can tell you when to protest, what time to protest, where you're allowed to protest, like, at the end of Gandhi's, you know, day of hunger strike, he didn't say, oh, well, you know, it's five o'clock now, it's getting inconvenient, I'm gonna go clock out because I'm being asked to move. No, that's not the way the right to demonstrate works, as far as my understanding. So I felt that they liberated us because right after that, all of the mandates kind of faded away.
And did you take your children with you to those manifestations?
Oh, definitely. Even my best friend brought her five-year-old daughter, she received free earplugs, and she had made a sign with, talking about, you know, the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, our freedom of assembly, expression, movement. For me, it was a beautiful thing.
Did you feel protected by the Ottawa Police?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I feel that they were just doing their job, they're not allowed to violently spring onto protesters who don't show violence themselves. And I felt like the Ottawa Police did a very good job at not instigating, but also, you know, keeping people safe, because I didn't see any reports of any violence, any arrests, any assaults, any rioting. Heard one man speaking earlier of a broken window, that's unfortunate, I don't know if it was linked to the truckers or not, but, yeah, it's, it was really something to witness.
How about, you said in your presentation that there were Canadian flags, did you see other flags?
Oh, yeah. I actually did see the one Nazi flag they were talking about, but I noticed that the, the media actually didn't show the full photo, and I have the full photo at home, I'd be happy to send to the commission. Actually, it was a man with a Nazi flag in front of parliament with Trudeau's face underneath, screaming, "Is this what you want?" So I don't think he was actually pro-Nazi, I think he was just misunderstood, but...
How about the other flags that were mentioned? Did you see any of them?
Oh, I saw a lot of Quebec flags, a lot of Canadian flags, a lot of Every Child Matter flags, I don't know...
Any flags that you couldn't recognize?
Oh, yeah, lots. There was people from every culture, background, creed, joining in on this.
Thanks very much for appearing before us and for making your comments. I actually found it very useful to hear your perspective, and I think, like my co-commissioners, are very pleased to hear a, a wide range of perspectives during our hearings and various means that we're gonna be rolling out the commission. I'm a human rights lawyer, I've been a human rights lawyer for about 25 years now, I've done this kind of thing in countries around the world, and one of the things about doing this kind of human rights work is, the idea behind this kind of human rights work is to provide spaces and places for people who believe their rights have been violated and yet haven't had an opportunity to talk about those violations. Your experiences are really interesting, but you yourself said you, you were liberated, you had free expression, you had the ability to protest or join the protesters.
Finally, I did.
After two years, that's right, two years of being at home and locked down and a pariah in your neighborhood. And so, you can understand then that our focus and emphasis here is to provide those, that's what human rights work is all about, is to provide vulnerable disadvantaged folks an opportunity to be heard when they haven't been heard. And, you know, some, I think the last speaker said she was shocked that the city of Ottawa didn't even have like a kind of town forum, a community forum, after the fact, and I agree with that, and that might have been an oper, another opportunity that was missed. So I just wanted to put that out there for you as, as to why our emphasis might be on those who feel their rights were violated but their voices weren't heard because they didn't have an opportunity to be heard. I have one question for you. If we... If we look at this hypothetically, okay? If you heard about a protest in Canada where people felt threatened, harassed, discriminated against, ganged up on, intimidated, couldn't access food during the protest, just hypothetically, if you heard that, would you think that that was a good thing to have happened during a protest?
Well, it depends on where I heard it from. I'm the kind of person that likes to see things with my own eyes, which is why I went and spent 50 hours down there, from Bay Street down to Rideau Street, down to, you know, all the streets, meeting with all the supporters and the counter protesters and the truckers and the parents and people from the city and people from outside of the city. So, depends on where I heard it, I think. And, yeah, I really appreciate...
And if you heard it from a reliable source, what would you think? A source that's reliable to you? Someone who, let's say, had been there and said, "Yeah, I saw some stuff I didn't like."
Well, I would think that, it sounds a lot like Canada Day celebrations, to be honest. I mean, people drinking, people dancing, the streets blocked off. But some of the more negative things you talked about reminded me of the last two years, of not being able to, you know, access groceries and not being able to go out and walk around in my community or drive around. So, yeah, there's, I guess there's negative and positive with it. But I feel like, for me, it was overall positive, because it put an end to that suffering that I felt I had been going through for two years.
Thank you.
Good afternoon to everybody in the room and to you. I am Stephanie, and I'm gonna read my statement. Having resided in downtown Ottawa neighbourhoods for over 30 years in a city that is very accustomed to different types of protests, rallies, and strikes, never did I witness anything so white, so extreme, and so threateningly dangerous. They were really well-funded and organised as instigating disruptors with a very clear American influential component. It was obvious right from the beginning that they were digging in for the long haul and had no intention of leaving until they achieved whatever their collective objectives were. For three weeks, the people of downtown had to endure intimidation, violence, and lawlessness. And when I say violence, psychological violence, it's physical violence if they're honking their horns and people's dogs are upset, and their kids are crying and don't understand it, just putting that in there. This convoy occupation was deliberately orchestrated to overthrow our country's democracy. It is led by a small group of destructive anarchists and is nothing short of the most severe and appalling treasonous behaviour ever experienced here. I use the present tense on purpose, because while we don't want them back, they will be, we fear they will be. The very life of our democratically-elected Prime Minister was threatened. Once the Emergencies Act was in place, they still challenged our police forces. This non-democratically-elected, self-appointed group of convoy leaders took it upon themselves to suggest they would assume power of our federal government by uniting with select elected MPs. This action alone was criminal in every respect. Had their numbers been greater and the weather more accommodating, this occupation by convoy anarchists could have very well unceded the stability of our nation as we know it and thrown into jeopardy the established programmes and protection Canadians rely on. A terrorist is a person who uses violence and intimidation in pursuit of political aims. These convoy participants and their supporters should be treated exactly as such. There is no safety and security to our neighbourhoods or to our elected government representatives when they come here. Each and every one of those who remained or returned after that initial weekend should have been arrested and bear a criminal record for life. Canada is the second-largest country in the world, rich in vast natural resources and with just under 39 million people spread across it. This convoy tested the limits of our democratic core. It set a dangerous and costly precedent of how far a few well-funded united fringe groups got. Our inability to restore order and normalcy quickly and efficiently unfortunately exposed our many weaknesses. The convoy occupation could not, by the farthest stretch, be classified as peaceful assembly. Enough with those who would instigate and attempt the greatest treasonous act against country and claim it is their right to do so based on the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Coming out to Parliament Hill and attempting to destabilise the country in the middle of a global pandemic is clearly a form of terrorism and by no means remotely close to a peaceful protest. The convoy occupation was anything but a love fest. Our local businesses had to close, and residents feared venturing out as they normally would and going about their regular daily activities. We were all impacted by their presence in one way or another. Everyone has been struggling in their own way after COVID came. The last thing the businesses and residents of downtown Ottawa needed to be dealt, another heavy blow from a group of irate and volatile convoy people. For next time, if there is a next time, a firmer, seasoned cell approach of occupation vehicles. Some form of financial accountability and restitution is most definitely in order. Stiff fines to generate restitution funding for affected businesses and residents, and that places liens on their homes and businesses for those who refuse to pay up. So, my most important sentence that I would like to deliver. Most importantly, what not one of us must lose sight of is that the convoy came to Ottawa to intentionally overthrow our democratically-elected federal government system. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you, thank you so much for sharing that with us, Stephanie. I'm wondering if there's anything you would feel comfortable sharing in terms of some of your own personal...
I absolutely did, and I didn't want to identify some of them. I sent you, three o'clock or two o'clock in the morning this morning, my name, my last name is Strudwick, and I don't care who knows. So it's Stephanie Strudwick, and I did a longer version. This is like a synopsis.
Right.
And my version doesn't have as many spelling mistakes as your version. But I put "other", and then I let you know about the racism, about the 13-year-old girls being harassed by 20-something truckers going, "Take it off, take it off, take it off", 13-years-old, you know? Garbage, feces and urine soaked garbage being dumped on a Jewish person's lawn. It's in my, it's in my, you know...
In your written statement?
Yes, it is, yeah. And I'll send this to and add this, sort of. Anything else, or?
Well, maybe in relation to that, and maybe you address this in the statement.
Okay.
You'll see that one of the things that is on our mind is, certainly, we're very much wanting and needing to hear about people's experiences and what they either directly experienced or directly witnessed.
Right.
We're also, amongst other things, very interested to know about people's engagement with, yes or no, police and officials around any of this. And wondering whether you had any of that?
Yes, and it's in the statement. On two very cold days, I walked around the neighbourhood photographing and categorising all of the, cataloguing all of the vehicles. Now granted, a lot of those vehicles probably belonged in the neighbourhood, but then what I did is, after I put them all together, consolidated them, I sent two emails to my community police officer, who is a wonderful woman. Yeah. And then another day, like, there was a couple of mothers over with their small primary children over at Devonshire Public School. Devonshire put out a call to the Hintonburg Community Association, and I'm friends with those people, they put out a call. I turned around, put out a call for Dalhousie Community, which is just over here. And I can tell you, it was pretty cold at seven o'clock, eight o'clock in the morning, and we stood out on the corners. We were not counter-protesting, we were just there to make sure that the parents of those young primary school children were not harassed or intimidated. We had two mothers and their children, one at Rosemont and Wellington, and the other one happened right in front of Devonshire Public School. That's in there. The fellow who owns my corner store, right after the convoy arrived, three of them walk in, no masks, and this is when you had to wear a mask. So, really nice fellow of Asian descent said to them, "You have to, can you please put a mask on?", and they berated him, it was a Saturday. So he just locked up right then and there, and he went home to his family. Closed the store early, you know? And I had to tell a Jewish neighbour, you know, "Take down that Jewish symbol that you have over your door in 2022 in Canada", because I was afraid that somebody would target her because she's Jewish. And I, and she did. And then, you know, I ended up, I had to babysit a cat that was 14-years-old and had never been out of its house overnight, because that mother and her child did not feel on the third weekend that it was safe to be in the neighbourhood. We're in the official blue zone. So, you know, just, just, there were lots of little incidents. I mean, I just sort of put little pieces in there and could go on and just, you know, use up all your time, and you wouldn't hear from anybody else, but...
Okay, well, no, that's helpful to know we've got the written statement. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much, everybody, and, okay.
All right, friends, that brings us to the close of today's proceedings, the first session of the Ottawa People's Commission on the convoy occupation. And I obviously want to begin absolutely by expressing deep thanks, appreciation, and I think maybe above all, really, really strong respect to everyone who came forward today to share their stories. I know many of you are still in the room. And we know that that is not easy. It's never easy to come forward in public about anything, really, in that way. But to have been sharing things that were, that were so personal that for many of you were obviously deeply upsetting and even traumatising is something that we appreciate and respect deeply. We value and honour both your contribution and your courage in doing so. Certainly also very much want to extend thanks to everyone else who is here this afternoon. This is the People's Commission, and so it's really important that the people are in the room, that people are following this journey, which, you know, there will be certain members of the community who are the ones who come forward to speak truths, and as we saw this afternoon, divergent, varying truths, and so be it. And it's really valuable that the people, the community, are here to witness that and to be supportive of that process. So, so thank you very much to you for coming this afternoon, because you brought that incredibly important aspect to this. This is session number one, and there are going to be many others to come, which means many other opportunities to contribute. So for those of you who are here today and weren't on the speakers' list this time and are thinking maybe you would like to, certainly do follow up and be in touch. There's a whole variety of ways to do so. As you've already heard, some of our, some of the people who made oral presentations today have also made written contributions. And for some of you, that may be a more comfortable or appropriate way of doing so. Some of you may want to do both, some of you may prefer to engage orally. As you likely know, we do have a website. I'm sure if you Google Ottawa People's Commission, I'm assuming it's the first thing that comes up. But it is opc-cpo.ca. And you can find everything you need to know there in terms of how to engage, how to register if you're interested in being part of a future session. Huge shout-out and thanks to our interpreters at the back of the room. Again, given that this is about the people and about the community, it's so important and valuable that we're able to do this work. And alongside that is the technical crew, who have amplified our voices, made it possible format to share that video that we saw earlier, et cetera. So, so thank you very much to all of you. There's a whole crew, and I won't dare to begin to name people, but behind all of this, this is about the people, and it is overwhelmingly a volunteer-led process and initiative, from its very conception through to all of the hard work that made it possible for us to launch today, and behind the scenes in keeping things running so smoothly today. So also huge thank you to the volunteers who are playing such a critical role. And we plan to be taking this on the road, to a certain degree, showing up in various parts of Centertown, Lower Town, other parts of Ottawa, for instance. But we began today here at McNab, and I know especially some of our volunteers who have been involved in a lot of the logistical work around this very much appreciated the engagement and support from the staff here at the McNab Community Centre, so I wanted to thank them as well. Lastly, please do stay engaged. It's, we do intend to keep this going in a whole variety of ways over the course of the, you know, of the fall. I guess, is today? Yeah, today is the beginning of fall, isn't it? So we truly are into the fall. And as I said, we will be taking on the road. There will be hearings in different locations. We're also, some sessions will be like today, where we are hearing individually from people in that kind of testimony sort of way. We also plan on having a number of community meetings in different areas, which will be focused on particular groups within the community or particular themes that emerged. So all of that information will in due course be available on the website, and you can follow it closely. If you were super-engaged today and want more of the same, you don't need to wait long, because session number two is tomorrow. And we will be gathering tomorrow in the evening. We're going to be doing a mixture of daytime and evening sessions to boost accessibility. With that in mind, I should also mention that some of the future sessions, including sessions like today, will be online, again, with that idea of making sure we have a mix of different formats that maximise accessibility. But if you did want to come out again, and you would be very, very welcome to join us in person tomorrow. It's between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. at Le Patrol d'Autawa, which is at 40 Coburg Street in Lower Town. Again, that information is on the website, if you didn't get it. And as I say, that's tomorrow between 7:00 and 9:00. And then lastly, I just want, I know he's no longer with us, but I wanted to again thank Sheldon for his opening and welcome prayer earlier this afternoon. And huge appreciation to both Leilani and Monia for being such amazing colleagues. Thank you. Thank you.